...year this is, it's the theatrical season for Santa Barbara High School. Opens this Friday, runs this weekend and next weekend, and it's gonna be Little Shop of Horrors. And you know, I'm just along for the ride, there's another Jordan in the room, so I just want to pass this over to Otto Lehman, who's the theater director, and he'll tell you a little bit about the theater, and then we'll see how much mayhem we can cause, okay? Thanks.
Come on down. I have to say, I saw Singing in the Rain, it was my first one to watch it rain onstage, was just spectacular.
Thank you very much.
So, I can just imagine what you're gonna do with a big plant that eats things, so I don't know.
You bet. But, uh... Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, thank you so much for letting us be here today. As a longtime member of the arts community in Santa Barbara, I was a member of the Ensemble Theater Company since the early 80s into the 90s, and then teaching theater at Santa Barbara High School since 1996. I've always been deeply appreciative of the supports of arts in Santa Barbara, especially how we encourage and nurture young talent, and I have been just privileged to work at a place that has extraordinary talent. Little Shop of Horrors marks the first show of my 15th year at Santa Barbara High School. Usually, we do one musical a year, but this year, because of the people that I have, we're doing two. Little Shop of Horrors opens this Friday, plays this weekend and next weekend, and without further ado, I would just like to give over the stage to the talent. Thank you.
Why don't you all come on down? You wanna... You're gonna be where you are? All right.
Too close.
All right. Action.
Look, God, what an existence I got. Misfit employees, bums on the sidewalk. Business is lousy, my life is living hell. You wagons off the stoop! Ain't nothing wrong with the winos permanently decorating the storefronts. I need three worthless random muffins to complete the picture.
Are we bothering nobody? Are we crystals?
No, we're not gone yet.
You should be in school!
We're on the split shift.
Right. We went to school till the 5th grade, then we split.
So, how do you intend to better yourselves?
Better ourselves? Mister, when you from Skid Row? Ain't no such thing. A lamp goes out at seven, and you start a town. You're putting away hours for the power, step up always be.
Sing it, child.
Till it's 5:00 P.M.
Then you go.
Downtown, where the folks are broke, you go downtown. Where your life's a joke, you go downtown. Where you buy your token, you go home to Skid Row.
Home to Skid Row.
Yes, you go.
Downtown.
Where the caps don't stop.
Downtown.
Where the food is slop.
Downtown, where the hoppets flop in the store. Down on Skid Row. Uptown, you cater to a man and jerks. Uptown, you messengers and railroad clerks. Eating all your lunches at the hot dog cart. The buses take your money and they break your hearts. Uptown, you cater to a million and fours. You just don't make the rustle on their bathroom floor. Your money's a relation after months of curse. And five in four is even worse.
That's when you go.
Downtown, with kaisa drips. Downtown.
Where you rip your slips.
Downtown.
Where relationships are no good. Down on Skid Row.
Down on Skid Row. Down on Skid Row. Down on Skid Row, down on Skid Row.
Poor. All my life, I've always been poor. I keep asking God what I'm for. And he tells me, gee, I'm not sure. Sweep that floor, kid, oh! I started life as an orphan, a child of the street, here on Skid Row. He took me in, gave me shelter, a bed, crust of bread and junk. Treats me like dirt, calls me a slob, which I am. So I live downtown.
Oh, whoa. Down on Skid Row.
To get out of here, 'cause I constantly pray I'll get out of here. Please won't somebody say I'll get out of here? Someone gimme my shot, or I'll rot here.
Downtown, there's no rules for us. Downtown, 'cause it's dangerous. Downtown, where the rainbows just are no show. When you live downtown, where the sun don't shine. Downtown, pass the vodka line. Downtown, go stand here, wine will heal no.
You're out of Skid.
Skid Row.
Thank you so much, and I hope you'll join us.
Thank you very much, that was a great ad for your upcoming performance, thank you very much. Now it's on with our show, I guess. Okay, we have Jeffrey Bard to be followed by Patricia Bartoli-Wyble.
Two minutes, okay. Madam Mayor, thank you, members of council. That was wonderful, and it's great to be back in town. I had a 5-speed, and I took a drive on Mountain Road and Gibraltar Road, and it's great to be back in Santa Barbara, especially when you're behind the wheel of a car. I want to give you a quick information on incident and pattern of fraudulent offshore telemarketing scams targeting our elderly citizens. I was waiting in line to purchase money order to send to Measure J, actually, and in front of me, a 93-year-old was engaged in an interchange with a store manager, and it became apparent that she was trying to buy a $150 money order because somebody called her up at home and said, "You want a million dollars, you need to send $150 to this address." Store manager couldn't talk her out of it, and I had met John Tine at the Dudley Lynn debate, and we talked about law school, Mr. Tine encouraged me to return to law school and finish my degree, be that as it may. I gave him a call, Mr. Tine kindly took the call and talked to the lady, and to make a long story short, I placed a 911 call to a sheriff's deputy, he responded very rapidly, and he just, you know, talked to her like you'd talk to your own grandmother, and shortly she got her money back, and that one case is closed. I found out, though, it's an ongoing pattern, and I've spoken to certain people about it, and basically, all we can really do is educate the public. I thank you, Mayor Schneider, for your comment. After Measure S was, unfortunately, in my view, defeated, the problems are still outstanding, including crime prevention, education, and prevention of victimization of our elderly citizens, so it's an ongoing problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Wyble will be followed by Barrett Reed.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and council, I'm really thrilled to be here. Following the business forum yesterday, I was really pleased that Southern California Edison was listed on your 15 points, and I wanted to let you know that the direct install program will be starting in January for small businesses under 100 kilowatts, and there'll be a contractor that will assist the businesses in reaching some of their energy efficiency goals by, with window tinting, light bulb exchange, and other audits that will help them to save money in their 2011 going forward, so I just want to let you know that's on its way.
Great, thank you very much. Barrett Reed will be followed by Ruth Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, distinguished members of the council, this is my first time, and I'm here with these two, and I'm here to pray for you guys, just out of love. We love you, we love our city, and we thank you for everything you've done for us. So, Father, I just, I thank you for the city of Santa Barbara, I thank you for our mayor, our leaders, our council members. I ask that you bless them, Father, today, and in the subsequent days, months, and years ahead. Bless them, Father, in Jesus' name. I speak strength, and peace, and confidence, and leadership to come upon them. Bless them, Lord, in your son's name. I speak a creativity, a wisdom, a discernment, to bless their minds, their hearts, their bodies, their families, in Jesus' name. Father, I speak directly to homelessness, the crime in Santa Barbara, prostitution, poverty, and I know your hand is over this city, so in the name of Jesus Christ, I ask for an increase in your power and your love to fall over Santa Barbara, that over the next year, we will see a dramatic reduction in those areas. So bless our time today, bless our leaders, we love them, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Ruth Wilson will be followed by Kenneth Locke.
Well, I'm back.
Bard, welcome back.
Hi, everybody. I got up this morning churning, because I have a friend who had a six-hour surgery yesterday, and you know, every day, there's stuff churning, like DOS is leaving, and we're finding who's gonna fill in, and... So I got up at 5:30, I couldn't sleep, and I went in, and this is what I read in my book on meditating with God, and God spoke to me, he said, "Sitting quietly with me, letting all your fears and worries bubble up to the surface of your consciousness, there, in the light of my presence, the bubbles pop and disappear. However, some fears surface over and over again, especially fear of the future. You tend to project yourself mentally into the next day, week, month, year, decade, and you visualize yourself coping badly in those times. What you're seeing is a false image, because it doesn't include me. Those gloomy times that you imagine will not come to pass, because my presence will be with you at all times." And you know, I have a scripture, it changes from time to time, but I live off of a scripture that feeds my heart, and I turned right after I read that, I turned to Zephaniah, that's a book that you don't often hear about, and in Zephaniah, verse 17, Zephaniah 2, verse 17, "The Lord your God is with you; he is mighty to save. He will take great delight in you; he will quiet you with his love; he will rejoice over you with singing. And so, Lord, they belong to you." In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke will be followed by Robert Burke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I have to make you aware of the fact that this community, as well as yourselves, are victims of fraud, and it's, it's, I've been made aware of this, and I can make it aware, you guys are aware of it, and where it stems from. It actually stems from our educational system. So our, our educational system is actually guilty of fraud. It's fraudulent. It's, it's standard for its education, it's actually substandard. When it says that it's standardizing education, it's actually substandardizing education. Its master's degree, it's not a master's degree. I don't know how intelligent a person has to be to realize, I guess, I guess I'm intelligent enough to realize this, and understand that in relation to the fine arts, and also athletics, and I can pass this knowledge along to a person who is intelligent, again, to actually learn this knowledge and actually learn the truth. So if a person wants to learn the truth about education, they'll learn, they'll learn things like the nature of how this, how we've been passing along this master's degree, but again, it's not at a standard of a true master. When do we come to terms with this? It just continues until we do come to terms. And then, based on the fact that, say, you guys have been victims of this, your standard of the law that you're establishing here, you're substandardizing the law. You're degrading the community, I'm sorry to inform you. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Burke will be followed by Kate Smith, and the final speaker will be Jeff Wood.
Good day, Madam Schneider, council members. November the 11th is Veterans Day. I am inviting each and every one of you, and I will have an invitation after the council meeting to hand to you. There is a Veterans Day memorial ceremonies to be held at the Veterans War Memorial Building. The posting of the colors will start at 11 o'clock. Not only are you invited, but this is a community event, so anybody in the community who wants to attend, to hear the speakers, and participate in the ceremonies is welcome. The posting of the colors will be at 11 o'clock, so please be there before then, because the doors will close while the posting of the colors is posted. That's what I have to say, and I do wish, I hope you all come, I think some of you will be showing, and like I say, this is a community event, so anybody who is in the community is welcome to, to come. It's 112, I'm sorry, help me out here.
West.
West Carrillo, and the Veterans War Memorial Building. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you for letting us know. Kate Smith will be followed by Jeff Wood. Come on up, Kate.
Mayor Schneider, members of the Santa Barbara City Council. First of all, I'd like to say kudos to Otto Lehman and his students, especially since I'm one of the few remaining credentialed high school drama teachers. They discontinued credentialing teachers in drama in 1975. The ability of the human to express themselves and to admire the expressions of others through the performing arts, theater, song, dance, and the fine arts, painting and sculpture, and through writing, poetry, novels, is the most important gift we can give our children, and yet, our schools have removed the arts from the curriculum. There is deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption in Santa Barbara County. Today is the inverse of 9/11/01, it is 11/9/10, and I'm announcing that it's a glorious revolution. The people are rising to this podium and are demanding social change. Measure S is the school-to-prison pipeline, and on September 7th, I voiced my opposition at a press conference, where the education politico-industrial complex was out in force. Every politician, every hired administrator and department head wanted to take $485 million to build a prison that houses our children, the mentally ill, the drug and alcohol addicted. Yesterday, I was on trial for voicing my opposition.
Can you just wind up, Kate?
And the case was continued to December 13th, because the entire judiciary was listed in the Santa Barbara Independent October 28th issue, page 25. They must be recused. It starts out admitting that they are precluded from being political, so I am demanding that the Attorney General come in, that we have a federal grand jury...
Kate, your time's up, you need to wind up, please.
Well, according to Americans with Disabilities, I get extra time.
You're way over two minutes already, so I'll give you till three minutes, you have another 15 seconds.
The Gang Task Force is a cabal, you approved $800,000 for the CalGrip grant, it went directly into the pockets of the hired administrators, and I would have you know that to divide the Gang Task Force into just the politicians, the education, the, the leadership council...
Kate Smith, your time is up. Thank you very much.
I'm supposed to get four minutes, according to the Americans with Disabilities?
No, you're supposed to get three minutes, according to the mayor, so you can, your time is up. Thank you very much, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would that you would hear me and act.
We heard you.
Well, then act upon my request, please.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you. The final speaker will be Jeff Wood.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. This isn't my first time to be here, and after watching the performance from the high school students, I have to say that I'm afraid of what these kids are gonna inherit from you guys' decisions and how you're playing politics. I grew up thinking that the law said we don't pass on debt, we live sustainable lives. None of you, none of you are doing anything about making sustainability in these communities. There, there's crime happening. The police here are not, they're overpaid for the kind of protection that they're offering this community. The children are our future, they're speaking loud messages, and they're, you people are not listening to anybody. You're playing these evil games, and they're disgusting, and they, the children have bad role models if you're the best that this community has to offer. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We're on to the consent calendar, you do have a couple of items to read, thank you.
Item 1, adoption of ordinance for 2010 Fire Code, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 8.04, to adopt by reference the 2009 edition of the International Fire Code, including Appendix Chapter 4, and appendices B, 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 C, 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 and H of that code, and the 2010 California Fire Code with local amendments to both codes. And Item 2, adoption of 2010 State Building Codes Ordinance, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 22.04, adopting by reference the California State Building Codes and other related codes, adopting local revisions to those codes, and repealing ordinance numbers 5440 and 5451.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading, there was a request to remove item number 6, just for discussion, was that Mr. White or Mr. Hotchkiss? It was Mr. Hotchkiss, go ahead. Item 6, could you read that, please?
Item 6, Capitol Improvement Project's First Quarter Report for Fiscal Year 2011.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for the public, the, what the redevelopment East Agency, East Cabrillo Sidewalk Replacement Phase 2 is, so people understand, because they're about to see minor chaos down there, so let's tell them what's coming.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Pat Kelly, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, Madam Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Hotchkiss. This project is the continuation of replacement of the deteriorated sidewalks on East Beach. The first phase of that was from near State Street, close to Milpus, and the rest of the project will be from there to the Cabrillo Arts Center, and it's simply just replacing the existing sidewalk in the similar manner that had been placed, replaced in front of Chase Palm Park. It's a status quo to remove the trip-and-fall hazards and other deteriorated sidewalk there.
Thank you. That was that all? Okay, I also need to abstain from item number 9 on the consent calendar, it's a parcel map within 1,000 feet from my residence, so if we could vote on that separately, I'd appreciate it. Mr. White, did you also have a...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a question on item number 1 that I'd like to ask of our city attorney when the time is right.
We can ask right now. Item 1 is the adoption of ordinance for the 2010 Fire Code.
Upgraded Fire Code, yes, and I don't see a fire staff person here, but while we have been considering the updates to the Fire Code, I have been discussing with fire staff the, our inspection program in the urban wild and interface, and I think there's at least a concern that was raised, that I wanted to at least get a, our attorney to weigh in on, and that is, does the city have the right to inspect a prop, does city fire staff have the right to inspect a property against the property owner's will? In other words, is, can there be a, a sort of a, a police power ability to inspect them? Could you...
Mr. Wiley?
Answer that, please, Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the answer to that question is yes. You know, generally, the first thing we do is ask, if we need to inspect property, the first thing we do is ask for the property owner's permission to do so, and then also, if the property has, say, a tenant, we would ask the tenant as well. At times, we, we don't get consent to do the inspection, and the state government code does contain a provision that allows, specifically allows, city code inspectors, fire building code, zoning code inspectors, to inspect properties. We would not use that authority to go into the interior of a structure. If we needed to do that, and the property owner did not consent, we can get what's called an inspection warrant, and it's very similar to a search warrant from a judge, it's issued by a judge. It is not as much, the standard for issuing one isn't as high as a search warrant, which is probable cause. Inspection warrant just requires good cause being demonstrated by the inspector of the need to, to inspect the property, but, so the, the answer is clearly yes, particularly the exterior of a property, the, the yard of a property, there is clear authority for an inspection, and if need be, we would get an inspection warrant.
Here, Mike.
Madam Mayor, the, of course, any urban wild and interface inspection program needs broad-based support from stakeholders, from the landowners, tenants, from the community, but we've experienced three fires in, in relatively recent history, where this city has, has lost a large number of homes, and this is an area where I think we still have some real work to do to upgrade our, our preventative system, so I, but I did want to have that on the record for going forward with our efforts to upgrade the inspection system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, so you don't need to vote on that separately? No. Mr. House?
Well, I just moved the consent, I move the consent calendar, except for item 9.
Second.
Madam Mayor, before you vote on that, just wanted to note, there's item 12 under the notices, it talks about a site visit, and I've been informed, that appeal has been withdrawn, so we're not going to have that site visit that day.
Okay, so we're removing item 12 from, from there.
Still moved.
Okay, so there's a motion for the consent calendar minus items number 9, which we'll vote on separately, and 12, which has been removed from the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move item 9 on the consent counter.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and one abstention, that's me. Okay. Thank you. That concludes the consent calendar report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we heard, we heard today the first quarter interim financial reports, and it seems everything is pretty much on target, some of the, the, most of the departments look a little bit over budget, but that's only because we have an extra paycheck in this quarter, and that will even out during the rest of the year. We also heard and recommended to the full council a request to fund a Habitat for Humanity income, low-income housing project on the 800 East block of Cannon-Burkido, and that will be coming to council soon.
Okay, thank you. A report from the Ordinance Committee, Mr. House.
Yes, the Ordinance Committee met today to finalize our review and update of the sign, city sign regulations, Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Chapter 22.70, and, which interestingly, sign regulations in the city were first adopted in 1888. That is a very interesting thing, we've been at this for a long time. Anyway, those have been forwarded to the city council for their consideration.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14.
Council vacancy appointment process.
Okay. Well, in Mr. Williams' absence, I want to congratulate him on a win to the California State Assembly, he's either up there or taking some time off, or a combination of both, or something like that today. Mr. Lopez, you have the floor for this item.
Good afternoon, Council, good afternoon. I'm Marcelo Lopez, Assistant City Administrator. With me is our city clerk, Cindy Rodriguez. As you know, Councilmember Daz Williams was elected to the Assembly on November 2nd. In anticipation of his resignation, a resignation which has now been received, we prepared a council agenda report for the council to consider a process for filling that vacancy. If you look to the process as required under our charter, first we look to Section 503 of our charter, which states, "A vacancy in the city council or in the office of mayor from whatever costs arising other than expiration of term of the election of a member of the city council to the office of mayor shall be filled by appointment by the city council within 30 days of the occurrence of such vacancy." So in terms of looking at what are the eligibility requirements to be appointed to this seat, we looked to... to be appointed to this seat, we looked to Section 501 of the Charter, eligibility, which states, "No person shall be eligible to hold office as mayor or as a member of the city council unless he is and shall have been a resident and qualified elector of the city for at least 30 days, next preceding the date of his election or appointment. The city council shall judge the qualifications of its members as set forth in this charter." So in our recommendation, we looked to the schedule of the 30 days. So we laid out a process that takes this into consideration, which begins, in summary, by taking applications this month, closing applications towards the end of this month, holding an interview process of eligible applicants on December 7th, and closing then with the selection of a person to fill that position, the vacancy. Let me give you some of the, and I think for the public's interest, some of the bullet points that we have addressed in the council agenda report. More specifically, we would recommend beginning the announcement of the application process on November 9th, proceeding with a simple application that would be filled out by the applicant, submitted to the city clerk, no later than the 29th of this month. This will give us an opportunity for us then to compile all of these applications and submit them to the city council in anticipation of your December 7th meeting. So there would be ample time for the council members to be able to review the applications. On December 7th, that's the point in time where we invite, we would recommend the council consider interviewing the applicants, asking the questions that the council may have of interest in terms of the appointment. And then appoint by resolution an applicant to replace Councilmember Williams on Tuesday, December 14th, 2010. I know that the decision is not a simple decision, but we did try to keep the process as straightforward and as streamlined as possible. And that's what we are recommending to council at this point.
Thank you. I just want to start, a lot of people have asked, and I've seen in the press, why not have a special election? I just want to emphasize, this is in the charter approved by the voters, that this is the way this happens. So it's not a decision by us. So just to put that out there, I know there's been some questions of why not have a special election. And if the voters want to change the charter to do that, they're welcome to do so. But this is the process where this has to happen. Any questions or comments? We do have one public comment on this item. Why don't we go to that? Crisito Cruz, if you'd like to come on up. You have two minutes at the podium. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Councilmembers. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today on this agenda item number 14. I think it's extremely important that we look at the political culture and our political history within this local jurisdiction about having representation and qualitative representation for the west side and the east side part of Santa Barbara. Reflective of the demographics that is on the dais, I think we also should be considered of someone that is representative of the Mexican-Chicano community to be able to be a bridge, a conduit for the issues that are plaguing our community at this moment. I think the ultimate prevailing to this is education. If we invested education, I think we would definitely empower the community with vibrant services. I think the public welfare or the social fabric of our citizens and our populace should be utmost. Public safety should be secondary. And I think public welfare for the welfare of the people of Santa Barbara should be utmost important. I just stand here in front of the dais also to look at the political culture that we've been had in the past. And I will be stipulating and writing a synopsis to all the council members and Madam Mayor with this political culture of our history. So it's an important decision, and I am eligible. I am a resident, and I'm an electoral too. So I'm throwing my hat in this process. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. That closes public comment. It's back to the council. I see no lights on. We do need to move this forward or make a decision. We could, Mr. House?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I'm waiting for people to get all excited. They're upset about this, and there really isn't much to be upset about. Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez, for putting together a good recommendation. And I want to move that forward with the motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. Okay. So applications will be available at the city clerk's office today, then. Okay. Item number 15.
Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Application Release and Funding Process.
Thank you. Mr. Bossi? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Bossi, and I'm the Housing and Redevelopment Manager with the City of Santa Barbara. And my part for this particular presentation is brief. I just wanted to announce to you Deirdre Randolph, who will be giving the presentation today. Deirdre is our new Community Development Program Supervisor. And she has been with the city right at 12 years. So she brings a great deal of knowledge and experience to the position. And we're happy to have her on board. Many of you have already seen her at various committee meetings with the public. So she was able to hit the ground running. And with that, we will be giving our presentation. Take it away, Deirdre.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My PowerPoint is not working, so I'm just going to be presenting from my, ah, it's on my screen, but it's not up there. Shall I just go ahead?
Do a preset and then preset four. The preset four.
There we go. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Today, we will be discussing the Community Development Block Grant Application Release and Funding Process. The City of Santa Barbara makes an annual application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, entitlement funds which are used to address various community development needs. The city also makes available additional monies from its general fund to support human services programs that provide direct social services to city residents. There are four major components of the process that require council's consideration, input, and/or action today. Review and provide input and direction to the Community Development and Human Services Committee, the CDHSC, on funding priorities for the fiscal year 2012 Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Allocation Process. Authorize staff to release the combined CDBG and Human Services fiscal year 2012 funding application along with the committee application review process, criteria, and schedule for evaluation of those applications. Require that attendance at the Application Orientation Technical Assistance Workshop be made mandatory in order for applications to be accepted. And establish a funding commitment from the fiscal year 2012 general fund in the amount of $703,256 for the human services program. First, I will discuss funding priorities. This slide shows the CDBG funding priorities. These broad national priorities focus on providing decent, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, especially for low and moderate income persons. CDBG is primarily a bricks and mortar program with the largest portion of the funds used for capital projects. Council previously adopted these CDBG priorities for capital projects. They are: Proposals that facilitate housing for low and moderate income persons; Proposals which revitalize downtown neighborhoods; Proposals that strengthen or expand public or social service agencies; And economic development proposals which leverage financial resources to create or retain jobs for low and moderate income persons. These CDBG capital priorities are not recommended for change this year. The Community Development and Human Services Committee has found that these priorities allow great flexibility to meet the various needs of our community. The CDBG program allows a maximum of 15% of the CDBG grant to be used for public human service activities. These funds are combined with human services funds provided from the city's general fund. The current public human services priorities, as previously adopted by council, are: First, proposals which help meet basic emergency human needs and programs that directly relate to city-initiated collaborative efforts, such as the South Coast Gang Task Force and the strategies to address community issues related to homelessness. And the second priority, proposals which are preventative in nature and/or promote the highest degree of functioning the individual is capable of achieving. At a required public hearing on housing and community development needs held on September 28th, 2010, the Community Development Human Services Committee reviewed council goals as well as the federally mandated Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR, which reported to the community and to HUD on the city's use of CDBG funds during fiscal year 2011. At that meeting, the committee also reviewed council's public human services funding priorities. The committee voted to recommend to council that the word "emergency" be deleted from the first priority under the public human services category in order to make it more inclusive. If approved, it would now read, "Proposals which help meet basic human needs and programs that directly relate to city-initiated collaborative efforts, such as the South Coast Gang Task Force and strategies to address community issues related to homelessness." I've mentioned the Community Development Human Services Committee several times today. This committee is made up of 13 members appointed by city council who represent a broad range of community interests. Recognizing the adopted council goals, this committee reviews applications, interviews each applicant, analyzes all the proposals, and makes funding recommendations to council. Attachments 1 and 2 of the agenda report show programs funded by CDHSC in fiscal year 2011 and their priority rating and primary service category. Staff is not recommending any changes to the application criteria, Attachment 3 of your report. And the schedule, Attachment 4, is similar to last year's. Upon council's authorization, a master funding application is scheduled to be available November 11th, 2010. Announcements will be mailed to all current grant recipients as well as agencies that have shown interest in applying this year or have applied for funding in the past two years. Advertisements will also be placed in the Daily Sound and the Santa Barbara News Press. An Application Orientation Technical Assistance Workshop is scheduled for November 16th. Staff recommends that council require that attendance at this orientation workshop be made mandatory. I will discuss this in more detail in just a moment. Applications will be due December 16th, 2010, by 3 p.m. Late applications will not be accepted. As it was last year, this deadline is earlier in past years due to the mandatory city furlough. Interviews will be held throughout the month of February 2011, with funding recommendations tentatively scheduled to come before council on March 22nd. Regarding the Application Orientation Technical Assistance Workshop, at its October 27th, 2009 meeting, council expressed that the workshop is highly valuable and advised staff to emphasize to applicants the importance of attending. Staff absolutely agrees and recommends that, in order to be eligible for a grant, a representative of each applicant agency must attend the Application Orientation Technical Assistance Workshop. Programs applying for CDBG and/or human services grant funds must meet established criteria, funding requirements, standards of performance, and accountability. In order to ensure that all applicants receive requisite training, it is very important that they attend the orientation workshop in its entirety as scheduled, even if the applicant has applied for and received funding in the past. This would help reduce application errors, save staff time, and ensure a smooth, efficient application process. In preparation for this proposed change, all agencies that applied for CDBG human services funds have been notified that this year's orientation workshop will be mandatory if approved today. As I discussed, program funding is derived from two sources. The CDBG program allocated 1.2 million of new entitlement and reprogram funds in fiscal year 2011. Staff anticipates CDBG funds to remain level or to be slightly increased for fiscal year 2012. The City of Santa Barbara has contracted with local agencies to provide essential social services for many years. Over the years, thousands of city residents have received assistance from agencies supported through city human services funds. In the current fiscal year, the human services funds plus the 15% CDBG public service funds help to support 49 local programs. In past years, council expressed a desire to increase human services funds by 3% each year to help keep pace with inflation. A comparison of human services funds since their inception in 1989 and the Consumer Price Index over that same time period indicates that human services funds have fallen behind inflation by 13.5% over the years. However, due to the current economic challenges, council approved level funding in fiscal years 2010 and 2011, and staff is recommending level funding again for fiscal year 2012 in the amount of $703,256. If approved by council, this funding commitment will be included in the city's fiscal year 2012 budget. It is important that distinct established application criteria and funding priorities be available for use by applicants, CDHS committee, and staff. Now is the opportunity for council to take action on the recommendations discussed today and provide any additional direction to the CDHS committee and staff for the fiscal year 2012 application process. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And we have Sue Gray here, our veteran CDBG human services expert, to help answer any other questions you may have.
Great. Thank you. And I also see Veronica Colosa and Greg Gorga from the committee. Thank you for being here. And you have speaker slips. I just want to emphasize one of the things you said. The CDBG funding, the slide that said "level" or "slightly increased" for next fiscal year, that's from the federal government, Housing and Urban Development. And we're asking, you're asking us to keep the current level, "level", not "increased". But we don't know yet about HUD because they haven't figured out their budget.
No, we don't know.
Okay. That's why it said "level" or "slightly increased". Great. Any questions first before I go to public comment? Okay. Veronica Colosa will be followed by Greg Gorga, and then we have Robert Burke. Come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Veronica Colosa, and I am the Chair of the Community Development and Human Services Committee. On behalf of the Community Development and Human Services Committee, I would like to thank council for the continued support the city has given to the human services grant program. The committee is very grateful that funding has not been reduced during these difficult economic times. Many nonprofit agencies supported by human services funds are being hit hard by the current economy with more and more people needing services and less money available to assist them. Many agencies have reported that their donations are down. Many have reported a loss of state and county monies. They are being forced to make program cuts and in some cases, eliminating entire programs, which ultimately affects the city's most vulnerable residents. We anticipate new funding requests resulting from the recent work with Task We anticipate new funding requests resulting from the recent work with Task Force on Youth Violence, and the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations. It is increasingly difficult to find new programs, excuse me, to fund new programs that address pressing needs without reducing or eliminating funding from our programs. We are before your council respectfully requesting your consideration that the human services program is funded level to last fiscal year's funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Greg Gorga, and then the final speaker will be Robert Burke.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Let me start off by wishing you a very happy birthday this week, Madam Mayor.
Next week.
Next week, okay. As most of you know, besides being Vice Chair of this commission, I am also the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum, so I know firsthand the struggle that our local nonprofits are experiencing during these difficult economic times, trying to serve more people in these toughest situations with less resources, and often, in the case, with less staff. These funds help so many good agencies in our community. They allow more food to be served, more programs to be provided, and they keep staff employed. We ask that you maintain your level of support, as you did last year. And this past year, our applications that we received for support, I believe, increased about 20% over the previous year, and I have no reason to expect it will decline this year. The need is greater, more than ever. And these programs serve very key needs, food, shelter, they address the issue of gang violence and homelessness. I want to thank you for your support, and I want to leave you with a quote from Mahatma Gandhi, that says, "A nation's greatness is measured by how it treats its weakest members." And I think that's the measure of our great community as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Burke.
Madam Mayor, council members. My comment is a question. I believe that the workshop that they are proposing is November 16th, from 2:30 to 4:30, which is on a Tuesday. Is there a council meeting at that time?
Yes.
I would like to request that there be, not only for myself, but for other people, this will be my first time making an application for the stand-down that happens during the summer, and transportation for that. My request is that there be more than one workshop put up, so that people not be limited to just the one day that they would have, especially if it's mandatory. So I make that request and that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. I guess I want to go to staff about answering that question, but it's already, well, it's anyone involved in the organization, doesn't have to be the executive director, or the development director, or it could be anyone connected to the program, correct?
Madam Mayor, council members, that is correct. We need a representative there, they can take notes if it's not the person. It's not usually the executive director that comes. If they have a grant-writing staff, it's usually that person.
Okay.
So it's just one representative.
Okay. Okay. It's to the council? Any comments, questions, a motion, all that good stuff? Mr. House?
A question. I couldn't tell in the recommendation here if it also included the committee's recommendation to remove the word "emergency" from the first priority.
Ms. Randolph?
Our intention was that you would take action on that today, Councilmember House, and I believe that we, let's see, it's under Item A, under Recommendations, regarding the funding priorities for fiscal year 2012.
I read the, if I may, I read the, in the staff report, their rationale for taking that word out, and that they would be able to, it would give them some more flexibility with regards to the applications that they're seeing, and they felt that that was something that was really appropriate. And I really want to take their advice seriously, because they're the ones who are in probably the hottest seat in town during that period of time, trying to divvy up these funds. And so why particularly do you think we should not take their advice?
No, I think that they are.
We're in favor of that.
Oh, am I misunderstanding? So you're recommending that we take their advice and remove the word "emergency"? Okay, good. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. I'll move, then, the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
That's A, B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I also want to ask Mr. House what you're doing on December 16th, between 2:45 and 3:00 p.m. If your annual...
Grant, the grant collector. I will be out there, in some bright orange sort of suit, waving people in frantically to make sure they get in on time. And I think, really, the message to the community who have an interest in this, is these things have to be in on time, no exception. So that 3 o'clock time when it clicks over. So if you're lollygagging down the street...
That includes city staff, as I remember from a couple of years ago.
That has happened, it has happened, and you know, you're going to get some real encouragement. I think we're going to have it coned off, so people can pull up to the curb and rush in, but, of course, get them in as soon as you possibly can.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 16.
Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations.
Thank you. I'll just start briefly, and then I think, Ms. Gray, are you taking this, or Mr. Bossi? With a lot of conversation, I see some members from the Milpus Community Association, people related to Casas Esperanza in the rooms, and planning commissioners who I know want to speak. The issue, as it related to food and lunch programs and things, has obviously been a big topic the last several weeks. And it occurred to me, as the conversations were happening, that the council subcommittee that we put together a couple of years ago, really never talked about it, even though it talked about a whole host of other issues related to homelessness and community relations. So it seemed appropriate to really broaden the discussion to a citywide one, and actually a regional one, as a lot of our planning commissioners mentioned. I did watch last Thursday's meeting, as opposed to one particular item in one particular part of town, although that particular part of town obviously needs some attention. So I don't want to diminish that, but, so that was sort of the thought process, and I know my name's been mentioned around about bringing this back up to the agenda, and then timing seems really helpful. So I appreciate that, and why don't we turn that over to Ms. Gray, and then we have some public comment about it? Thank you.
Great. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Sue Gray, and I'm the Administrative Services Manager in the Community Development Department. As Mayor Schneider announced, the item before you today concerns the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations. In June 2008, council established the subcommittee, which was made up of three council members, Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Francisco, and former council member Falcone. Recognizing that homelessness is a complex social issue that cannot be solved by the city, the committee was charged with making recommendations to the full council with input from community members on strategies to address five identified issues. Between July 2008 and January 2009, a total of nine forum-type community meetings were held. Information and input was gathered from city staff, local businesses, faith-based organizations, homeless service providers, community members, and homeless persons, on each of the five identified areas. In February 2009, council approved the 12 Strategies to Address Community Issues Related to Homelessness in the City of Santa Barbara, and directed staff to implement the recommended strategies, and returned to council in 12 months with a status report. On March 30th of this year, staff provided an update to the council on the 12 recommended strategies, and that was included in your packet for your information. Since the approval of the strategies in 2009, there have been numerous discussions concerning the provision of meals to homeless persons and others in need, specifically questions regarding whether lunch should be served to the general homeless population in one centralized location, or spread out to smaller locations in different areas of the city. As Mayor Schneider commented, after discussions with her, staff believes that the appropriate venue to discuss the provision of meals citywide is through the council subcommittee. As such, we are recommending that council appoint a new subcommittee member to fill the vacancy left by former council member Falcone, and reconvene the subcommittee to receive an update on the status of the implementation of the strategies, as well as address the issue of meal provision citywide. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Planning Commissioner Deborah Schwartz is here to speak during public comment to provide feedback from the Planning Commission regarding last week's meeting on Casas Esperanza's conditional use permit.
Great. Actually, I'd like to ask Commissioner Schwartz to come on up and give your synopsis of last week's Planning Commission meeting that might help us up here right off. Thank you, and thank you for doing this today.
Thank you. Is the mic on? Great. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am here on behalf of the full Planning Commission. We had a series of two meetings, as you may know. October 21st, we heard two and a half hours of public comment, primarily focused on, or initially charged with being focused on, the two-year report on Casas Esperanza's conditional use permit. We needed to continue that meeting, we did so to November 4th, which allowed us to ask questions of staff, Captain Altavilla, who I see is here today, Mike Foley, and our Assistant City Attorney Scott Vincent, and then discuss not only Casas Esperanza's CUP, but what quickly became apparent to us, and that is the pressing need and call by the community for a larger public dialogue on issues in the Milpus Corridor, in this case specifically the Lower Milpus Corridor. I'm here today to express what was distilled into nine points, and thank you to Ms. Gray, and also our Assistant Julie Rodriguez for compiling our key points. But I want to say that clearly the impassioned expressions by the public, both the residents, the business community, those who work at Casas Esperanza and are served by Casas Esperanza, led to a larger set of complex, and I believe vexing, issues that require pressing investigation and addressing, not only by the city, but possibly in a larger regional context. With that, and Madam Mayor, I'm not sure how much time I have, so I want to be mindful of that.
I'm giving you, however you want to present the Planning Commission, because I think it was really important to hear from the commission.
First, I'm going to go through the nine points, and I have an extra copy of this for your packets. First, the Planning Commission asks to have representation in the council subcommittee discussions. Second, we put forward a suggestion that the first task for the Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations is to articulate a strategy that promotes responsibility over opportunism with regard to addressing homeless issues at the local level. Third, suggestion to council to communicate with the County Board of Supervisors, the city's insistence that regional cooperation is driven by fair share resources, resource allocation, that applies to homelessness in addition to all other regional issues addressed by multi-agencies. Fourth, increased police presence in the Milpus area and downtown. Associated with that, number five, a return of the criminal statistical analysis position in the Santa Barbara Police Department for use by the Milpus Area Task Force. As you know, this was eliminated, and we think it has some critical consequences in terms of it being a void in our expertise to analyze the crime data. Six, consider mobile meal delivery operations. Seven, increase Casas Esperanza's step-up program, and I believe Mr. Foley apprised us that there are four individuals working that program, but we recommend that it be expanded. Number eight, explore a strategy to move from the simple free lunch paradigm to an offering that is driven by responsibility and community betterment. And lastly, consider new or supplemental homeless residential location or locations. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, or if there's additional information you'd like me to take back to the commission, I know that there are other members of the public who'd like to speak, and I want to be sensitive to your time for deliberation as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Schwartz? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I also just want to let people know, I spoke with Dr. Wada, who's the Director of the County Public Health Department, that this item was on the agenda, and assuming this moves forward, we're going to need to ask for their expertise about state codes, health codes, and how that relates to food distribution, and to participate in any future meetings, and he was more than happy to be a part of that, so just wanted to bring that up. Why don't we move to public comment, then? Jarrett Goran will be followed by Sharon Byrne. Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jarrett Goran, and I am here speaking on behalf of the Milpus Community Association, of which I am a board member. We are glad to see that this is getting some attention, and the speed with which it's getting attention, we're really glad to see that. However, we are concerned that this may just be an exercise of just talking about a problem, rather than doing things to fix the real problems. We hope the city is looking for real and measurable solutions that are going to produce results that the community is going to be able to see and feel. The recent experience with the Planning Commission review for Casas Esperanza might reinforce the public's perception that the city holds facilities like CASA to a different standard than all other types of projects. At those hearings, it sort of seems like anyone who raises the issue of asking the homeless service providers to do something to address their significant and adverse impacts to the community, immediately gets called heartless, uncompassionate, selfish, et cetera. And, you know, I was sort of surprised at, it's a sort of arrogance, almost, of the homeless service providers and their supporters. Their position appears to be that their cause outranks any other community concerns or priorities. And, you know, if their facilities and programs adversely affect the community, then that's okay, because what they do is more important than anything that anyone else thinks is important. And we just, we don't think that that's right, but that's certainly the feeling we got. We're hoping that your council will appoint a subcommittee member who will work to balance the needs of the homeless with the needs of Santa Barbara residents, businesses, and visitors. Aren't the health, safety, and welfare concerns of the people who live and work here at least as important as making Santa Barbara an inviting and comfortable place for the homeless? We think so. We hope that you will appoint somebody who is willing to ask the homeless service providers to make changes to their programs, if necessary, or provide funding for additional community-wide enforcement, if that's what's necessary, to address impacts on our community around Milpus and throughout the city.
You need to wind up, please.
Okay. We want somebody who's not going to be intimidated by the predictable "shame on you" comments that get directed at anybody who, you know, suggests that other community concerns matter besides just taking care of the homeless. So we're glad to see this is on the city's radar. We're hoping that it's going to generate real results, not just more discussion, and we thank the existing committee members and the new one in advance. As Commissioner Schwartz said, this is, it's complex and vexing, and I do not envy you, but I wish you good luck.
Thank you very much. Sharon Byrne will be followed by Jeffrey Bard. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I just want to make a couple of comments. One is, I'm very appreciative that you're going to reconvene Subcommittee on Council to look at this. There's one person I'd love for you to consult with, his name is Sebastian Aldana. He actually lives on Cota Street, next to a church that actually worked to do a satellite feeding facility. The reason I'd like you to consult with him is it didn't go well, but thanks to his volunteerism and his efforts, actually, they've worked out the kinks. I'd like to not see other neighborhoods kind of go through the same experience. If we could do a little bit better out of the gate with one of those models, that would be great. The second thing is, I'm sure you're aware, but the original 10-year plan looked like, to me, it was very much focused on chronic homelessness, a small percentage of the homeless population, I think 10 to 15%. And the plan is big, and has a lot of programs, even though it's a narrow scope in audience that it addresses. Lately, there have been an awful lot of folks coming to Santa Barbara. I'm meeting them kind of on a daily basis now, that are coming from Oakland, coming from San Diego, all over the, you know, really the state, and even out of the state. And they have, some of them have just fallen out of the bottom of the economy, and they need some help. One thing that concerns me is I just hope there's some creative solutions, fast creative solutions we can put in place, to help this, so that they don't end up in the chronic homeless category. I think it's not too far, you know, if you stay in that position. So I'm hoping that you'll solicit some input from the community on some of those solutions, and I'd like to, if I could be so bold, to ask that you appoint Bendy White to that subcommittee, since he's very familiar with some of the things that we've dealt with in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Bard will be followed by John Dixon, who will be the last speaker.
Hi. I'm kind of an oddball, First Presbyterian and Trinity Episcopal both, and at any rate, I was at the pre-Easter event, and I was grateful to see Helene Schneider and Grand House were there at that event. Now, this committee is going to take a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of time from your schedule, and I know there's other people that have deep concerns, and I've expressed disappointment at the way that the campaign was run for Mr. Francisco. the campaign was run for Mr. Francisco, but he's, and I have come a long way.
Could you please keep to the item on the
The item is, I'm recommending Grant House.
Okay.
But I would, I would accept Dale Francisco. Okay. Now, I was an NGO participant in the Homeless Services Oversight Committee and in another county, which we're going to try to reconstitute the South Coast City County Committee here in this county. And I conducted an evaluation, and frankly, there's some problems out there that need fixing, but it's not half as bad as the whole would have it. I would ask people on Milpus not to overdramatize the problem, otherwise, how are we going to cite anywhere else? So, let's be realistic. Now, I do support the proposal for multiple citing. I'm not going to obstruct it, but this free lunch mantra is ridiculous. I went up to get paperwork Friday, and there was a free lunch for public employees, and who hasn't had a private company job that didn't have a free lunch every now and then? That mantra will not get you very far. Come on. And please, let's not racialize this. If we're going to start talking racializing it, and let's get Del Mexica up here from Los Angeles, and let's recognize the dominoes that are being laid out, and let's start talking about racial issues, otherwise, let's just not. And let's keep it Andy, let's keep it Mayberry. This is a local problem in many respects. Let's keep it positive and upbeat so we can get some solutions, rather than just a bunch of fistfights in the hall. The voice not heard is the voice of the homeless person, and I deeply resent someone sitting on the Planning Commission talking about MCA's voice not being heard. MCA has concerns, but their voice is being heard loud and clear. The homeless people are the ones whose voice isn't being heard.
Okay. John Dixon will be our final speaker. You can also see two minutes right there on the, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
That's very good.
My own stopwatch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm John Dixon from Tri-County Brutus on Milpus, Ground Zero, and a bunch of other committees that would take too much time to mention. I was involved with also the Subcommittee, I believe, in a lot of the meetings and trying to solve these problems, and I've been at many committees and meetings, as you know, for the past 12 years. I hope that reconvening this committee does not equate to another year or two or three before solutions to the lower Milpus and Cabrio Ballpark chronic homeless problems can be solved. And I would assume you received my email just a couple of days ago with a lot of nice pictures, and those are the kind of things I'm dealing with every single day in my neighborhood in the lower Milpus area. And that's not an extreme. That was the daily stuff that we all see down there. You know, if these problems were outside, I would guess, right out here, wherever it is, on the lawn in Del Agüera, or maybe at the courthouse Sunken Gardens, I question whether these problems would even exist as long as they have, like they have in the lower Milpus and Cabrio Ballpark. I don't think they would. They've been there for many years now, and there's no really addressing the problem, which is really disturbing to me. So, please do something now, not months or years down the road. I'd also like to nominate Bendy White for the Subcommittee, as many have nominated somebody. And I'd also be happy to participate once again when, as a businessperson who's at Ground Zero involved in it, so I would like to be there as well. So, let's just solve the problem once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. I'm glad we're on the same wavelength. I also talked to Councilmember White about this, and just based on being on the Planning Commission before and connection with Milpus area as well, but that's up to you whether you'd like to accept that. But I think you'd make a great third person, assuming Mr. Francisco's still interested and to stay on, and I'm still interested to stay on. So, I think that would be a nice balanced committee, and we can figure out the next steps from there. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate that Ms. Byrne and Mr. Dixon gave me that support of confidence, that vote of confidence. The East Side, Milpus, has been my new project, I feel as if, that I've taken on when I became a councilperson. This is, the other work I'm doing is sort of in my comfort zone, and this is my stretch. And so, what we know about this problem, what we know about this area, is that we need short, mid, and long-term solutions, improvements. This is something that's going to take all hands on deck and just efforts all the way along. Mr. Dixon has been the archetype of that long-term effort. He's stayed intrepid and patient at the same time. And we've all, those of us who use Tri-County as our, one of our grocery stops, see what they have to go through, and then anytime we want to use those facilities, the Cabrio Boulevard, we see how there's that disharmony, that jangle that goes on, that just, that somehow we know we can do better than what's going on now. So, I look forward to doing what I can, which is going to be more pulling everybody to, together, and to make these short, mid, and long-term improvements to this difficult problem. And I look forward to serving with my distinguished colleagues, if I get the support of the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you. Mr. House?
This is very good news, I think, that the community is rolling up its sleeve and seeking partnerships and looking to be constructively engaged with this problem, and looking for opportunities, and perhaps we can do better than we've done in the past, and certainly we should. I do want to commend all the work that has gotten us even to this point, though, and not to forget that. The, coming up with the 12 points in the plan that the city has put together with the leadership of the committee in the past is really a model, I think, of community engagement. And to build on that, and to refine that, and to find better ways and new ways to deal with this very complex and difficult issue is just really wonderful. And I think that, I'm going to, I don't know who said it, but I'll really amplify it. It's really important that we think of who we're serving, that we recognize that we're serving the homeless, and the neighborhood, and the businesses, and the community as a whole. In other words, it's all together. It's not like one constituency versus another. This is a problem that we're all in. And so, I just had to make that point, and I think that's the spirit in which we've engaged with this issue over all these years. And Mr. White, I think you'll do a really good job. And I'm Mr. Motion Maker today, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. But I'm going to read it out loud. It's just two points. To point Mr. White to fill the vacancy on the Homeless and Community Relations Subcommittee, and to authorize the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness and Community Relations to reconvene within 60 days to review the progress on the implementation of the 12 recommended strategies outlined in Strategies to Address Community Issues Related to Homelessness in the City of Santa Barbara, and address the issue of meal provision citywide. And with that task, you've got a lot of work to do, so I'm looking forward to the results. And, oh, and I'm also speaking as your co-chair of the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, which engages all of the jurisdictions in the region here in this issue. And so, for the City of Santa Barbara to step up and be taking this next increment of responsibility, working with the community as a whole, I'm very proud of that, and I'll be glad to share that information back with the other jurisdictions as this progresses.
Okay, that wasn't the whole motion. There's the first two parts, but thank you for that.
Got a little editorial stuck in there.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. And Mr. House, I appreciate that you brought up your role as the South Coast, the co-chair of the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, because you'll be interacting with Supervisor Farr and council members, I think it's Connell from Galita and Reddington from
Kathleen Reddington and Margaret Connell.
Great, because I know that was a strong comment and resonance in the public comment and the Planning Commissioners about the regional nature of this and bringing them in. I would also just suggest that, obviously, before 60 days, Mr. Dixon's comments ring true, and we're certainly not going to wait on enforcement and other things, you know, before meetings start, so that needs to be continually vigilant. And I'll just, I appreciate everyone's trying to come together. I just think the more we try to, the more we point fingers at each other, the longer it will take to actually find and implement solutions. So, I think trying to come together and work on those solutions will be in a proactive way and in a productive way is the best way to go. So, I appreciate that very much. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome aboard, Mr. White.
I'll abstain.
You're going to abstain. Okay, one abstention. Okay, item 17, it says estimated time at four, not actual time, so we could probably, do we want to take a break till 4 o'clock? Or this is the, or do we have some people who are already here for interviews?
Mr. Smith here, and Mr. Burke's here.
Well, why don't we, why don't we start, why don't we start 17, so they don't, they're already here, they can come up and, because I don't, we said 4 o'clock.
I don't have my book on yet. I thought we were going to
Want to take, okay. Why don't we, so, want to take a break till 4?
About 4:30.
Here's my suggestion. Why don't we do 17, the people who are already here, because there's just a couple of them, have their, have them do their interview. That way, they don't have to wait, and then we'll take a break until 4 o'clock, and we'll finish the rest, okay? Could you read item number 17?
Interviews for city advisory groups.
Okay. Normally, we go A through Z, or Z through A, or through committee, but since there's just a few of you here right now, and then we're going to take a break and reconvene for that, I wanted those of you who are applying for a certain board or commission just come up and introduce yourself, and let us know which one or more committees you're, you are applying to, and just give us your name and information, and a little information about yourself and why you're interested in applying. And give us a few minutes to find your name on our sheet of paper here. So, you can come up whichever, however, whatever order you want to come up in. So, there's no, no points for being first or last, or in the middle.
What?
Good. Come on up. You win.
No points, you win.
Yeah, right. What did I, yeah, I just contradicted myself, didn't I? No points. If you could state your name and state which commission you're applying for.
Good afternoon. My name is Smith, James A. Smith, Jim Smith. I'm reapplying for membership on the Water Commission.
Right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I am very pleased to have been serving on that commission for the past 10 years. During that time, we've been successful in providing the city with both incoming water treatment and outgoing wastewater treatment each year with a rate increase of 3.5% or 4%, and no more than that. I think that's a commendable accomplishment when both of the water facilities are more than 30 years old. And to operate those and meet the increasingly stringent federal and state standards is, is an accomplishment that I'm pleased to have been on the commission and able to do that. I, before I was on the Water Commission, I worked for 37 years in the electric power business, and I find that there are some similarities in the requirements for supplying water and supplying electricity to consumers. So, I'm pleased to request that you reappoint me to continue to serve on the commission, so.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your long-time service. Any questions for Mr. Smith? No, thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else applying for a board or commission, just come on up.
Ms. Torres.
Ms. Torres, why don't you come on up? Yep. You're in Community Development, Human Services, correct?
Yep.
You can state your name and which commission you're applying for.
Good afternoon. My name is Josephine Torres, and I'm applying for the Community Development and Human Service Committee. I'll just go into reading.
Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Josephine Torres. I am a Latina American. I've lived in Santa Barbara all my life. I continue to have a passion for helping people of all cultures. I continue to help create meaningful dialogue among the community leaders and other people, especially those who are suffering from these challenging times. I have been a part of the West Side Advisory Committee, and most recently completed my four-year tenure with the Community Development and, Community Development and Human Service Committee. In my tenure, I voted in favor of Valoma Alta Capital Project because I felt it wasn't safe for pedestrians and vehicles. It's safe now, and has a beautiful walkway and lots of lighting. I also voted in favor of a 3.5, a 3% increase of CGBG dollar funds because we need to continue to help out the needy and the poor. In spite of having different opinions, I always strive to align with the opposition so we can improve the problems of our community. My reverence for this town stems from good ethics and positive relationships, which I have established with my grandmother and mother and professionals. I'm not ashamed to say that I was abandoned by my dad, but I am proud to say that now I move from the cycle of blame to acceptance, and I want to help people. I have a mission, I have a passion to build dialogue and to learn more about politics. In spite of the socioeconomic crisis we face, I do feel it's important to channel the CGBG dollars where it's most needed. I thank you very much, and I hope that I'm reappointed.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your past service. Any questions from Ms. Torres? Mr. House?
I just wanted to commend you and thank you for your service on the Community Action Commission Board as well. You represent the neighborhoods in our community really ably there as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other applicants? Okay, so, yes, come on up.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Councilman.
You could state your name and which
About a half hour ago, I decided to come down and say a few words.
If you could state, state your name and which
I almost threw a book at me. She didn't want me to come down, because I hadn't prepared anything. But I still, every
Can you let us know, hold on, hold on. Which commission are you applying for?
Pardon me?
Which commission are you applying for?
I'm not applying for a commission.
Okay, these are interviews for boards and commissions, so if, so that's what we're doing right now. If you had some public comment about something that happened at the beginning of the session.
I just have a one-minute public comment, if I might.
Well, we're not doing public comment right now. We're doing interviews for boards and commission members, so you're going to have to, we, but we're going to take a break, and I'm happy to hear what you have to say when we take a break, okay?
Well, would you tell my wife she doesn't have to throw a book at me, then?
I'll make sure she doesn't throw the book at you. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we're going to take, be in recess. We'll take a break until 4 o'clock. Thank you. We're going to call this City Council meeting back to order. We are still on item number 17, which is the appointment, the interviews for appointments to boards and commissions. And just so people in the audience know, we had a couple of applicants already here before we took a break at around 3:30, so we let them have their interviews, and we took a break, and now you're here because you saw 4 o'clock. So, that's how that worked. I first want to thank you for applying, and what we're going to do is go through the committees alphabetically. If you hear the committee name that you applied for, to please come up to the podium and just state your name and why you're interested in applying, and anything else you'd like to ask of us. We'll then, I'll see if there's any questions from the council. Usually, there's not. Don't take it personally, you know, it's just, but in case, once in a while, there is a question from the council, and then that's it. And we'll make the appointments in a couple of weeks, and there'll be some other dates where this time is open for other people who are applying to also show up to be, to do their interview. So, thank you for that. And I just also want to say upfront that sometimes there are multiple applicants for not as many positions, and so if you're not chosen this first time, you know, please consider applying again, or don't take it again. It's a hard decision sometimes for us to make, so, but I do appreciate your commitment to public service in this way. So, if, so, we're going to start with the Access Advisory Committee, and anyone who's coming on up and, I think, if you could, we could have, someone could, Susan, perhaps, if you could turn on that mic right there. So, if you could state your name, and if you've applied for more than one committee, you can have your interview count, you can do it all in one. So, if you've applied for more than one, then just state which other one you applied for, and then we'll watch for that and take our notes. So, why don't we start, you guys, is that mic on? Why don't you start?
Yes.
There you go. Why don't you start right there and state your name, and we'll go from here.
Okay, my name is Karen Johnson.
Thank you, Karen.
And I'm applying for a position on the Acts Committee. I've been on the committee in the past, but it was not a formal committee of the council. I've been on the committee in the past, but it was not a formal committee of the council, of the city. So my term was up, and so I'm reapplying. I enjoy serving on it. I have the time to go to the meetings. They're usually once every other month, on the last Friday that is available. I serve on the Board of Directors of EasyLive Corporation. I serve on the Board of Directors of SenCal Health. And I enjoy sticking, or putting a word in for the disabled in both of the other groups. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson?
Okay. Thank you very much. Robert, you're right there, right in front of you is the podium, if you'd like to, right there, yep, and there's a mic right in front of you. And the mic is on, so you can just, that's the light, and then there's the podium. There's the mic. There you go.
Who am I speaking to?
You're speaking to Mayor Schneider, and the City Council's in front of you.
Hi, Mayor Schneider. Nice to meet you.
Hello.
First of all, is Mr. Williams present?
No, Mr. Williams is up in Sacramento, so you got the rest of us up here.
I wanted to congratulate him on his election to the State Assembly, so.
Thank you. I'm sure he'll hear this.
My name is Bob Burnham. I have been totally blind since birth. I've been in customer service and dispatch for MTD for thirty-one years. So I love discussing issues of accessibility for a broad range of people with disabilities, blind, people using wheelchairs, deaf. There's all kinds of accessibility issues to be discussed. I have a cursory knowledge of what this committee does, and I've been given a vote of confidence by Sherry Fisher, my general manager, to serve on this committee. I have somewhat of a knowledge of the federal accessibility standards, and the ADA regulations. I was on the transition plan at MTD in the early seventies, mid-seventies, early eighties, to bring our fleet accessible. We got our first buses with wheelchair lifts in nineteen eighty-one, and we became one-hundred percent accessible in the late nineties. So it took a while, but we finally got our fleet one-hundred percent wheelchair accessible, which we're very happy about, and try to, now we have buses with lifts that are reliable, and I've had very few problems accommodating our folks using wheelchairs. So I love to listen, I love to come up with creative solutions, and I've been a facilitator for groups at La Casa de Maria, so I would love to serve on this committee. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Any questions from the council? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yes. Hi. Thank you for coming. Do you get around entirely with just a cane?
I use a cane. I'm a lifetime bus rider. I know the city pretty well, as far as, I think it's one of the most wonderful pedestrian-friendly cities in the world. In fact, I've served for two years, happy to serve on the Downtown Business, Downtown Organization Summer Host Program, with our tables out on State Street, with Georgette Friedman and those folks. So I'm proud to show off my city, not only for tourists and locals, but also to try to promote its accessibility for pedestrians. To answer your question, I'm sorry, in a roundabout way, yeah, I use a cane. I used to have a guide dog, but I was leading him around more than he was leading me, so I went back to using the cane.
Great.
That's amazing. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Could state your name, please?
My name is Victor Sir, and I'm applying for the Advisory Committee. And I've been doing this for over fifteen years, close to twenty years, making a list every year of where we put the curb ramps and stuff, and working with the city staff on the sidewalk repairing, where we're going to put sidewalks, where there are none. And I've been doing a lot of other stuff, too. I was at a lunch one time at Oak Park, and most of the people there were in wheelchairs, and I turned around, the lady was having the birthday party, and I said, "Look, most of people are in wheelchairs, but there's not a single bench, park bench, for anybody in a wheelchair." And Harriet Miller was right behind me, and I pointed it out to her, and she said, "Victor, take care of it." And I did. And we now have picnic tables in all of our parks for people in wheelchairs. And that's just a small example, plus all the curb ramps and everything else. I was involved in making the Veterans Memorial Building accessible, Stern's Wharf, Maritime Museum, Granada Theater, United States Post Office, La Barra Theater, City Hall, Housing Authority Building, Railroad Station, and up at Twenty Twenty APS, and a number of other places throughout the whole city of Santa Barbara, including City Hall here. And that's a short list. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. House?
I just wondered where, who came up with the idea of those benches like that, where you can put, the chair can get up under the end, and see.
It's real funny. Harriet Miller said, "Take care of it." And it took time. It took time. And I wasn't getting anywhere. And Harriet Miller says, "I know you can take care of it." And I said, "Again." And she said, "If you have any trouble, come and see me." And I was just ready to go see her. Something told me, "Don't do it." And a week later, I started hearing some rumors. And I went over to Oak Park, the benches were, tables were being cut up and stuff like this, and the city had a woman carpenter that was taking care of it. So about a year or two ago, I was talking to staff that is in charge of putting, you know, replacing picnic tables and stuff, and I said, "Well, when if we ever want, need, have this need again?" And he says, "Well, now we would just buy all new ones, already made that way." Where before, you didn't have any accessibility. So now, the staff don't have to do that. They just order new ones.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Ortega, I believe, yes?
Hello, Karen. Follow me.
You've been on, we've had a two-for-one with you for the last two years, right?
Yeah. Exactly. My name is Adelaide Ortega, and my family has been here since the seventeen hundreds, and I'm involved with the Braille Institute. I do a lot of, I teach ceramics there. And I'm also involved with guide dogs and fundraising. And I was also the president of the National Federation for the Blind here. And I just like being on the committee, because I think it's important to be able to know what's going on here in our town in Santa Barbara, and to help other people. And since I belong to the Braille Institute, I can take a lot of information over there. Like, right now, we're going, trying to get something going, because the bus, we never paid on the bus before. If blind people do not have to pay on the bus, but then all of a sudden, now, they want to start charging us. So now we're trying to work something out with them, so we're kind of into that right now.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Ortega? No. Great. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Also, just to let the committee, my colleagues know, there were four people who applied and three vacancies, but I believe the other vacancy that came up recently is not part of this recruitment, and there'll be, so there is a vacancy coming up in the near future as well. Okay. Okay. The Airport Commission. I see a couple of commissioners back there. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Karen Khan. As a former airport commissioner, I'm familiar with the commission's work, and understand the commitment required. My aviation experience includes almost thirty-four years as a pilot for Continental Airlines, the last twenty-two as captain on the MD-80 Boeing seven fifty-seven and seven sixty-seven. I have an intimate knowledge of our airport as an aircraft owner and tenant for the last twenty-six years. I take an active interest in our community's aviation affairs through my position as an aviation safety counselor, current master flight instructor, pilot, aviation career counselor, and I'm also the airport liaison representative for the Airline Pilots Association. My commercial property management experience includes my previous airport commission terms, three of those, as well as managing more than seventy-five units of my own here in Santa Barbara County during the last thirty-one years. I have the ability to speak clearly, both in public meetings and during media frenzies, after a headline-making aviation news event, from a position of knowledge and experience. In the past years, I've had the opportunity to explain a pilot's perspective to the city staff, other commission members, and the general public through my participation in public meetings, as well as TV interviews. During the past City Council and Coastal Commission meetings, I've been able to use my expertise in airline technical matters to help clarify events and data which was presented as to how medium-sized aircraft operate at airports such as Santa Barbara. My specific interests include improving and increasing our commercial air service without undue environmental impact, maintaining needed services for general aviation users, and correcting any safety hazards that could threaten our airport's continued viability. During my previous term as an airport commissioner, I made suggestions to streamline airport operations, specifically parking lot revenue recovery to cover the added security costs, ad campaign ideas to bolster some of our falling usage patterns, as well as proposing and promoting the installation of the free Wi-Fi service for users at the airport terminal. If appointed, my goal will be to continue to increase the communication and understanding between all users of the airport. I think my unique vantage point as an active participant in almost all of the airport services on a weekly basis, from airline passenger to local pilot to hangar tenant, helps me bring a real-time understanding of the problems that confront all segments of our community. I appreciate your time today, and thank you for considering my application.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No. Thank you very much. Ms. Griffin?
Patricia Griffin. Hello, Mayor, and council members. I am currently serving as an airport commissioner. This is the end of my second term. Previously, I had served from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-three, so I have a very long-term commitment to the airport. I don't even know when we started our talks about the terminal project, but it was certainly in the eighties, and I've been involved in that project since. And my request for another term is to see this to fruition, to be part of this fabulous project. And so, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? No. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Yep. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Kirk Martin, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm currently vice chair of the commission. I'm ending my first term. I, too, would like to see the project through to fruition. I believe also that it's an honorable commission. We have to educate the public as much as represent the public, and there are a number of issues that we continue to educate. And so I would like the opportunity to continue that project, and to continue to represent and educate.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Martin? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service. Architecture Board of Review. Anyone here for that? Arts Advisory Committee. Mr. Adams, come up. Either way, Nate and Mr. Vonck.
Robert Adams, city resident of the city of Santa Barbara, and current Landmarks Commissioner. And I am interested in stepping off the commission. I think it's in good shape. They have a landscape architect there that's very, very good. And I feel like I want to serve on the City Arts Advisory Commission. I've served the city for over seven years, and it's kind of a thing I really love to do. And I was part of the first State of the Art Gallery Committee when that was first convened, when we put temporary art on the sidewalks. And what I'm specifically interested in doing is really listening carefully to the proposals, and especially analyzing their settings, how art is set up, how it's presented. And my background is, my first degree was in the arts. I went to UCLA and studied painting and sculpture, and then ended up in theater and film. And I'm a fan of all cultural arts activities, and look forward to your considering my opportunity to serve on this different committee for the next four years.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Adams? No, but thank you for your service on HLC as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Nathan Vonck. I have a master's degree in English Literature. I'm the author of the Santa Barbara Arts Blog. I'm a member of the Steering Committee of the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative, and I work at the Sullivan Goss Gallery. As a member of the Arts Collaborative, I've taught a technical support workshop to teach artists the necessary computer skills to complete the collaborative's online grant application. More recently, for November's first Thursday, I organized and led a curated art crawl. As a staff member for the Sullivan Goss, I created a multimedia scavenger hunt, which helped educate participants about our local art history. The arts are a very important part of Santa Barbara's cultural identity, and I would like to see them, the arts become an even more fundamental part of our cultural and economic prosperity. Due to my experience working in a large commercial gallery, I've become passionate about educating artists with the skills they can use to become financially sustainable, which is particularly important in a city with Santa Barbara's cost of living. Santa Barbara's government is a powerful force in the arts, as both a patron that can help financially sustain the arts, and as a guiding resource that allows artists to contribute to our rich cultural history and collective identity. My desire to be on the advisory committee is part of my desire to help Santa Barbara artists thrive, and to help continue and build upon the important historical role that the arts have played in Santa Barbara. I'm excited about the potential to work with other arts enthusiasts on the committee, and to learn from their experience, and to help serve Santa Barbara. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, they're not. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on. Civil Service Commission. Community Development and Human Services Committee. I see Ms. Powell. Why don't you come on up?
My name, good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Powell. I'm a business owner here in Santa Barbara. I am, I finally have decided to call Santa Barbara home. I am a transplant. I've been here eleven years. I'm from the Midwest, Indianapolis, and it wasn't until I was home very recently that it finally came to me that Santa Barbara's home. So being a, having the opportunity to look and be a part of this committee is very, very exciting to me. I have to admit that our mayor has mentioned this organization to me on several occasions, but as we all know, it's all about timing. And it wasn't until about six months ago that I met Greg Gorga, who's with the Maritime Museum, and he mentioned the group to me again. And I took the time to research, and really decided, wow, this is what I've been looking for. Everything that I have done so far has really prepared me for this. I've been very involved in the community in the eleven years that I've been here. I was a two-term chair for Unity Shop, very, very, very much a part of the group that when we purchased the building on State Street, so I was a part of that. I was also a member of CAC, which is Citizen Advisory Council, which is a liaison between the community and the police. So I had a chance to really learn the streets of Santa Barbara, and really talk to a lot of the business owners, really understood the problem that we're having with gangs from their perspective. And also, learned a lot about our homeless, and what's happening out there. So, and also, was president of Kiwanis. I was only here for about five years, and became president of the Santa Barbara Club of Kiwanis. And our focus, my focus at that time with the group was youth and senior citizens. So of course, seeing, being a part of this committee, seeing youth and seniors being the focus, was very exciting for me, because that's already a passion of mine. Also, I was a part of Coalition of Healthy Kids, and you probably know, that was a group that was originally organized to provide health for all kids in California. So as you can see, I've had just a variety of experience within the community of Santa Barbara, which I think has all prepared me to be a part of this particular group. And when we talk about what are the experiences? And that has been my experience and it's always been in a leadership role. It's always been the chair of each of those groups. So I've been in a leadership role. So that has, that has prepared me and it's always been in those areas that's the focus of this particular committee. We talk about my skills. I'm an organizer. One thing I didn't say that, and Helene was very much a part of this, our mayor, should I say, excuse me, the Ladera Group, which is a block group, if you will. We were having some problems with gangs a few years ago and we decided to put a group of, together and just to really see if we could get in control of the gangs. And we did. And we were able to get our Chief Sanchez involved. And we end up getting a video camera. And we have a video camera right outside of one of our buildings. You remember that? Yeah. My picture was the one on the front page of that. So, so when I say that I have skills, those skills, I can organize. And then I, I know how to bring people together. I know how to motivate. I'm very organized. I've been in a leadership role. And then I'm also a visionary. I know how to think outside the box. So if there's times when we need to look at a different strategy or someone come with a different idea, then I have the ability to really kind of look at that and just kind of bring that along if it needs to be. So those is kind of my experience and skills. And when we talk about, is there anything that I really would want to change? I'll say no at this point because I'd like to learn more about what the direction is, really what has been done, what is the detail, the details of the group that's been communicated that, that's not a part of the description of the committee in, on the website. So before I say, "Do I want to change something?", I, I don't know that I do. But I certainly like what the committee focus is. And I believe, not just because I'm an African American, I think demographics is important, but I just believe in what the committee is doing and I would like to be a part of that.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Powell? No, thank you very much. Anyone else for Community Development, Human Services Committee? Okay. On to Community Events and Festivals. Creeks Advisory. Fire and Police Commission. Fire and Police, oh. For the Pension Commission. You, you just read my mind. Come on up, Mr. Tracy.
Hi. I'm Scott Tracy.
Police Pension Commission.
And I'm applying for the Fire and Police Pension Commission for a reappointment. I'm also currently on the Airport Commission for another two years. I'm enjoying the work with this commission. We brought the city back in compliance with the city charter, having our meetings. We've brought the funding back in where it should be. It's a very small group of people that it affects, excuse me, the survivor spouses and people who retired many years ago. But the retirement that they have has not had any cost of living increases, so you can imagine that this small group, it's very important to them. So I'd like to continue on this commission. And any questions?
Great. Thank you for your service. Any questions for Mr. Tracy? No. Yeah, we actually had an item related to the first time in my seven years here to, so thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, we have a quorum now.
What a con. Oh, that's, Mr. Hotchkiss.
I guess I do have a question. Sorry. You gonna have time enough to do both of these things?
Actually, yes. This is a quarterly commission. It only meets four times a year. And it's very informal. It's not videotaped or anything. And the meetings are pretty short because it's, there's not a lot of action going on.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Harbor Commission. Historic Landmarks Commission. Library Board. Maybe I should just ask who's left. Living Wage Advisory Committee? Come on up. There we go. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is David Langen and I'm interviewing for appointment as a qualified elector to the Living Wage Advisory Committee. I understand the three general functions of the committee and that it meets three to four hours per quarter. The time commitment shouldn't be a problem. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Barbara and I have a Bachelor's of Science in Mechanical Engineering from UC Irvine. I'm currently employed as a systems engineer and I design advanced-based systems. I have no financial interest in the living wage or the application of the ordinance and I have no personal or professional relations with city subcontractors or city employees. My interest in living wage is as a resident and to ensure that it is fairly and properly administered. Do you have any questions?
Great. Any questions for Mr. Langen? No? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Mosquito and Vector Management District Board. Parks and Recreation Commission. Planning Commission. I know, who else? What commission are you applying, you're not?
I'm a city...
You're just watching. Anyone here applying for? I think we're done for today. Okay. So we're done. Well, we have a couple of other dates where there'll be opportunities for, there'll be opportunities for people to interview. Any council committee assignment reports? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, the, the three smallest stones arrived at the courthouse yesterday morning at six-thirty or seven, something like that. There, so you'll now be able to watch the carving begin there of the fountain. That's very exciting. Water Commission met yesterday and did some heavy lifting. The long-term water supply plan schedule is, was presented and that basically a reexamination of our water supply system will be ongoing for the next eight months or so. So that will be in, in good sync with, with, with our general plan. What else do, that would be of interest? There are capital, the city, the capital improvement plan for the water system and wastewater system were, were presented yesterday as well. And the groundwater level report was submitted. So lots going on on the water, on the Water Commission.
Okay. Anyone else? Any assignment reports? Okay. The agenda says adjournment to West Cannon Perdido Street, but that appeal has been withdrawn, so we'll just adjourn till next week. Thank you very much.